And councilors are in their seats. It looks like we got everybody. Rob's probably on his way. He usually runs in a couple of minutes late. Tonight, we're going to start with an invocation from Kathleen.
Alrighty then. King Jesus, I just declare you are king and you are the only king in the earth. So we just praise and thank you that you give us the grace to do the things that are hard for us to do. So I thank you that you are extending wisdom to make important decisions for our city and that you are sending in your angels to protect our city and that you have good solutions on the horizon for our city. So I just praise and thank you. Jesus name, amen.
Thank you. If please rise for the flag salute and remove your caps.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Thank you. Go through a quick roll call. Kathleen?
Here.
We got Indra?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Victoria?
Here.
Seth?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Joel?
Here.
And Rob is not here just yet, so he's the only one we're missing. And we're going to go ahead and get started. First item on the agenda is an ordinance vacating common property lines quasi judicial. So at this time, I will open the public hearing to consider the application as filed. Oh, sorry, I missed that. I apologize. Eric?
That's okay. Yeah, can I get 4A removed from the consent agenda, please? I had a couple of questions on that before we voted on that.
Okay, so you've got a request to star 4A for further discussion?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, I think we can definitely do that. I'll make a note. Thank you. Alright, going to start over again a little bit here. At this time, I will open a public hearing to consider the application as filed. The application for ordinance vacating the common property line between tax lot 600 and 700 of map number 36-06-24-CC. We will begin the hearing with a staff report followed by a presentation by the applicant, statements by people in favor of the application, statements by people opposed to the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by staff and the applicant if available. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Seeing none. Do any councilors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? Seeing none. Are there any councilors who wish to disclose discussions, contact, or other expertise information that they have received prior to this meeting regarding this application? Seeing none. In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the development code. All testimony which applies to this case are noted in the staff report. If you would like a copy of this report, please write that on a note to the city manager and one can be provided. It is important to remember if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with a report from staff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. We have a property line vacation for you tonight. This is on Redwood Avenue, and there's two lots involved as there usually are on these applications. In this case, this is the Southern Oregon Sanitation. They are looking at a new location for their administrative offices. So this would be a new spot for them. They want to consolidate these two properties that you see on the screen here on the south side of Redwood Avenue into one property. There is an existing structure, as you'll see in just a second on the property, that's bisected by the line. So that's the reason for the request. So here's the assessor's tax lot map here. You can see lot 600 and 700 are the ones that we're talking about. And then the line with the red X is the one that's being proposed to be removed. And here we have a aerial photo that didn't come through. Should be in your packet. Sorry about that. But there is a building. It was built, I believe, in the early 80s. So it was before the city took over that area. So the building was approved through Josephine County. So we don't have any ability to look into why the property line goes right through the middle of the building since that was done when it was in Josephine County prior to annexation. Here's the two criteria for approval for property line vacations. We have looked at those as staff and thinks that those are, believe that those are met. We did not get any public comments for this application, and the call to action is tonight. The 120-day deadline is September 18th, and then there is a recommended motion for you.
Thank you, Brad. Do we have applicant representation today or not? Just don't want to pass anybody over.
Yeah, I know that we talked with sanitary services and they're aware of it, but...
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So at this time, we'll open it to public comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Seeing none. The public portion is now closed, and the matter is before the council for your consideration. Indra?
I move to approve the property line vacation as proposed.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the property line vacation as proposed and a second from Seth. Any further discussion? Alright, I'll do a roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Kathleen? Perfect. Passes.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass vacating the common property line between tax lots 600 and 700 of map number 36-06-24-CC.
Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda is ordinance adopting a developer's installation re-
Mayor, we need two readings.
Oh, sorry, sorry. It's been a long day. It's been hot. So we have first reading gone through. I go back to council for action. Rick?
I move to approve the ordinance vacating property lines between tax lot 600 and 700 map number 36624CC. Second reading.
Alright, we have a motion on the table to approve for second reading with a second from Eric. Any further discussion? Seeing, roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Passes unanimously for a second reading.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass vacating the common property line between tax lots 600 and 700 of map number 36-06-24-CC.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Now we'll move on to the next. Ordinance adopting a developer installation reimbursement district for E Street Sewer Extension. At this time, I'll open a public hearing to consider the application as filed. The application is for an ordinance adopting a development installation reimbursement district for E Street Sewer Extension. We will begin the hearing with a staff report followed by a presentation by the applicant if available, statements by persons in favor of the applications, statements by persons in opposition of the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Seeing none. Do any councilors wish to abstain from participation in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? Seeing none. Are there any councilors who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, or other expertise information they have received prior to this meeting regarding this application? Seeing none. In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the development code. All testimony which apply to this case are noted in the staff report. If you would like a copy of the staff report, please write on a note and provide to the city manager to get one to you. If this, it is important to remember if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with a report from staff.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public. This is for the E Street Sewer Extension Reimbursement District. And before we get started on that portion of it, I just kind of want to give a background on reimbursement districts. I know a lot of you probably haven't heard some of these before. So advanced finance districts started back in 1979 by the city with ordinance 4311. It was amended a few times until we got to 2008, which time it changed to reimbursement districts from advanced finance districts. It basically changed the methodology on how we calculate those assessments. It became more of a, for residential properties, a per dwelling unit assessment, kind of made it more fair and equitable for properties. And then we stuck with the half acreage and half frontage methodology for non-residential properties. And then that ordinance was amended a few times. The last time was in 2023 with ordinance 23-5882. That gets us to where we are today. So what is a reimbursement district? It's basically a contingent liability on property within the district that is formed by the city to permit the installer of those public improvements to recover a portion of the costs of the improvements that were installed which are adjacent to intervening properties. So basically, a property that benefits from infrastructure that went in has an assessment tied to their property. So the assessments, those fees are paid by the property owner only at the time that the property benefits from the improvement. So for us, that's typically at the connection to the water or sewer line, or when it's a street or a storm drain improvement, when they're seeking to expand an existing structure by more than 50% or build a new structure. And then along with that, we collect interest from the date of adoption of the ordinance, and that's imposed at the time those fees are paid, so when permits are pulled. And those reimbursements are then delivered to the developer for a period of 15 years. If the city is the instigator of that district, then it's in perpetuity. So it just goes on and on. So getting back to the E Street Sewer, this particular reimbursement district installed approximately 341 feet of sewer main in Fry Street and E Street. So it went north on Fry Street and then west on E Street. And this relates to council goal, infrastructure outcome one. Grants Pass will maintain and expand resilient infrastructure systems, transportation utilities, and public facilities that support safe growth for future generations. And we seem to be having issues with PDFs today. So the map is actually on page 11 of your council packet, if you guys want to take a look at that. There are nine associated properties. Properties three and five are actually the applicants of this district. So the assessments as far as this district goes, the total overall district was $84,644.50. It actually came in lower than the estimated costs, about 14% lower. So property owners will actually see somewhat of a relief on that assessment that they originally received. So upon connection to the city sewer, those properties will pay a set amount of $6,046.04 per dwelling units plus interest for the infrastructure. So as far as public outreach for this district, we worked with the applicants to make sure that the notices were sent out. So first notices for estimated costs were sent out in September with that public hearing being held in October. And then we got final costs, and that notice was mailed out on June 18th with the public hearing being held tonight. And no responses were received from those hearing notices. As far as the imposition of those assessments, connection to the sewer line will trigger payment by property owners. There's no financial outlay from the city other than staff time to administer this district. And so after this final ordinance is adopted by council and we have a reimbursement district agreement executed, then the collected funds will be returned equally to the two applicants on this one, which happen to be Kara and Bill, and Bill's in the audience tonight. And with that, the call to action date is tonight. And are there any questions?
Council have any questions for staff? Alright, seeing none. I noticed the applicant is in the audience. Does he want to weigh in or make a statement?
Being due to Grants Pass, I'm not sure how to do this, but I'll-
Come on up and just state your name and speak into the microphone.
Okay, my name is William Dennis. I moved here and developed the property at the end of E Street and built a home. So I plan on living here for perpetuity until I'm not living anymore. I urge you to approve this motion so that I can collect some money back. It was expensive to put that sewer line in. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alright, at this time, I'll open up to the audience, the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Alright, seeing none. Any final statements from staff? Seeing none. The public portion of this is now closed, and the matter is before the council for your consideration. So bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion. Victoria?
I move to approve the final ordinance allowing the developer to recover a portion of the costs associated with the installed improvements.
So a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion on the table to approve and a second. Rick? So we have a motion on the table to approve the application with a second further discussion. Rick?
I just want to add in the motion that have it read by title only first reading.
Perfect. Victoria, are you acceptable with amending the motion? Thank you. So the motion is to approve the application for first reading with a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Go through a roll call. Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes for first reading.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass adopting a developer-installed reimbursement district CC 6578 for the E Street Sewer Extension.
Alright, thank you. Bring it back to council for further deliberation or action. Rick?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance adopting the developer-installed reimbursement district CC 6578 for the E Street Sewer Extension. Have it read by title only second reading.
With a second from Seth. So we have a motion on the table for second reading with a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Passes for second reading.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants Pass adopting a developer-installed reimbursement district CC 6578 for the E Street Sewer Extension.
Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda is item C. At this time, I'll open the public hearing to consider the application as filed. The application is for an ordinance adopting a developer-installed reimbursement district for Buckmaster Subdivision Water Main Extension. We will begin the hearing with a staff report followed by a presentation by the application if available, statements by persons in favor of the application, statements by persons in opposition of the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant or staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Seeing none. Do any councilors have, wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest to this application? Seeing none. Are there any councilors who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, or other expertise information they have received prior to this meeting in regards to this application? Seeing none. In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the development code. All testimony which applies in this case are noted in the staff report. If you wish, if you would like a copy of this report, please write a note to the city manager and one can be provided. It is important to remember if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue, you will not be able to appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with a report from staff.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public. So this is the Buckmaster Subdivision Waterline Extension. This particular district installed about 695 lineal feet of water on Leonard Road, and it went from approximately southwest Harfus Drive west to the Buckmaster Subdivision. This supports the same council goal of infrastructure outcome one. Grants Pass will maintain and expand resilient infrastructure systems, transportation utilities, and public facilities that support safe growth for future generations. Again, the PDFs love this screen tonight. So this map is on page 19 of your council packet. There are a total of four properties associated with this district. Properties three and four are Redwood School, so school district seven. And property number two, which you can't see, is this one that's covered up by this nice gray box. So final district cost for this particular water line was just shy of $200,000. And so property owners that connect to this water line, there's a couple of different ways we did the assessment. So they'll either pay the residential per dwelling unit assessment or the non-residential assessment at the time. The reason being for the non-residential assessment is the school district properties are zoned residential, but they're developed as non-residential. So it makes sense to at least put that calculation in there knowing that they're developed as non-residential. So the residential assessments for this district are just shy of $1,800 per dwelling unit. And again, the property that is zoned are R5. We went ahead and made the determination that that would probably be an R2 when it came into the city. So we went ahead and did another calculation for that one. So depending on what it's zoned as they develop, they could only pay about $1,100 per dwelling unit if they were annexed into the city so we don't have to come back to council for a further calculation and approval. And then the two school district properties that are zoned residential, but we gave those non-residential assessments to, the ones about $31,500 and the other one's about $86,500. Again, public outreach was done on this. In September, we sent out the first hearing notices for the estimated costs with that hearing occurring in October. And then in June, we did another mailing for this hearing held tonight. So for the water imposition of assessment, it would happen at the time to connect to the installed water line, so when a property owner would come in and pull permits for water. Again, there's no financial outlay for the city other than staff time to administer this reimbursement district. And after this ordinance is adopted by council and the agreement is executed- Again, there's no financial outlay for the city other than staff time to administer this reimbursement district. And after this ordinance is adopted by council and the agreement is executed, then the collected funds will be returned to the developer, which in this case is Michael Masters, as those properties connect to that water line. And the call to action again is for tonight. Is there any questions?
Staff, I mean, counsel have any questions? For staff? Do we have applicant representing tonight?
Do not believe so.
All right. At this time, I'll open it up to the public. If anybody would like to stand up and speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Would anybody in the audience like to stand up in opposition of this application? Seeing none. The public portion of this is now closed and the matter is before the council for your Further discussion or motion? Indra?
I move that council adopt the ordinance as presented.
For first reading?
For first reading.
Excellent. So there's a motion on the table to adopt the application for first reading, second by Seth. Any further discussion? All right, we'll go through a roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously for first reading.
In ordinance of the council of the City of Grants Pass adopting a developer-installed reimbursement district CC 6577 for the Buckmaster Subdivision Water Main Extension.
Perfect, thank you. Bring it back to council for further discussion. Joel?
So I make a motion, let me see here, to approve the final ordinance allowing the developer to recover a portion of the costs associated with the installed improvements. Second reading.
Thank you, we had a motion for second reading with a second from Victoria. Any further discussion? All right, a roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
All right, passes for second reading.
In ordinance of the council of the City of Grants Pass adopting a developer-installed reimbursement district CC 6577 for the Buckmaster Subdivision Water Main Extension.
Thank you. All right, moving on through the agenda, we have appointments. We have a motion appointing two members, or we would be looking for an emotion to appoint two members to the Bike Ways and, Bike Ways and Walkways Committee. I believe there's a really bright, bright blue sheet in front of you. If you want to mark it, sign it, and pass it down, please. I'd appreciate it. These are like blinding.
They are.
mediums, and then we have, we basically have three applicants on here that kind of have got some favoritism. Emma Black, Bob Lane, and David White. So I'd be bringing it back to council for further discussion or action. Victoria?
I move to appoint Bob Lang to the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint one member, Bob Lane, to the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee. I got a second from Eric. So we have a motion on the table to appoint one member, Bob Lane, with a second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, we have one member appointed to the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee. We're looking for another appointee, so bring it back to council for further discussion or action. Rob?
Yeah, I'd like to appoint Emma Black to the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee.
All right, we have a nomination for Emma Black to be the second candidate to Bike Ways and Walkways Committee. I got a second from Rick. Any further discussion? All right. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, I'm the liaison to that committee. That committee was pretty, they were pretty definite in the fact that they felt that someone that could have really hands-on understanding of children going to and from school and the, the safe, safe routes to school, an advocate for the safe routes to school program was really kind of almost lacking, I guess, a little bit. There really isn't, I don't know if there's any other parents on that committee, so they really felt that someone that could represent that section of our community would be appropriate.
All right, thank you, Rob. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion to appoint Emma Black to the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee with a second, and I'll go through a roll call vote. Victoria?
Although I'm sure she would be wonderful, I prefer the second candidate, so I am voting no.
Okay, Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
Indra?
No.
Seth?
Yes.
Kathleen?
I see another candidate on there that I think would be equally good, so I'm going to say no.
All right, so we have a split in that vote. And so I guess that brings it back to me. So I would take Rob's comments as some backing of Emma Black with experience in certain sectors that would add beneficial to Bike Ways and Walkways Committee, so I will vote yes on that. So Emma Black will be the second candidate to be appointed to the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee. Thank you. All right, at this portion, we go into general public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items not related to a public hearing or council action items for the council. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the council as one body, not two individuals. At the conclusion of public comment, counselors will have an opportunity to respond. This meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free of slander, threats, and other personal attacks. Signs or placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public office, or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. If you have a question regarding government, any government-provided services, or the current city policies, please contact the city manager's office in an attempt to resolve the matter. I have two people that have signed up, and we'll just start with Dale. Please step to the podium and restate your name, and you have two minutes, sir.
It's not going to take two minutes. My name's Dale Aldrich, city resident, mayor. Lovely to meet your wife out there. You saw that we had a pretty good showing out there, group. Kids' Day in the park went good. We all supported this new outfit that we've together. Back 20 years ago, I rented the park for five years in a row doing Scotty Rama, and we had power problems back then. But at least we had access to the panel. Well, we had some people out there that were, I called it in, it, power was up at 1:00, 1:15 it was gone. Called it in, the on-call guy never called me back. Called it in, he's not responding to any calls, I'm very sorry. And we had people that were ready to break that lock off, but chief, I told them, no, let's get some generators out here, because I don't want to break the law. And we got it. My wife was the last one to get power, and she was pretty upset not handing snow cones out in that hot day. It took her about an hour and a half to get three generators out there to get everything going. So I sure hope you would deal with that. The park is such a beautiful place, and we're already looking at next year. We did find three, two needles, couple of caps and foils when we walked through that morning. The parks are not safe. Matter of fact, two days before that, we did a meeting out there just to go over the location, and right where we're doing a meeting, a cap and foil. We need to get these parks clean, and the only way to do that is get the drugs people into one place, not the homeless, the drug people in the one place. Not going to waste your time. Thank you very much, and those who support it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Pelfrey? Come on up to the podium, restate your name, and you have two minutes, sir.
Mike Pelfrey, city resident. I'm going to read a definition of the word feral. It says, "existing in a wild or untamed state, having returned to an untamed state from domestication." The reason I'm bringing this word to your attention is that that is exactly what we have roaming our city. We have a lot of human beings that have unfortunately gone feral. And if you've ever come upon a rat infestation or any other kind of animal infestation in your home, you'll notice that a lot of times they'll leave like a little nest and they're, you can tell that something was there. I mean, I had that happen with a barbecue one time, and a mouse got in there and built a little nice little nest when we were gone for several months. We have litter nests literally all over this city. And you know, what gets me is that this city is, if, if, if we are so, if tourism is so important to this city, the city is showing a really piss-poor way of actually understanding that. I've been out of town for about 12 days. I just happened to go through the city of Yakima, which we all know that Yakima and Grants Pass have something in common. It's not good. But needless to say, what Yakima didn't have was they didn't have three human cages of ferals. Now, not all of them are ferals, but a lot of them are ferals. And I mean that. I, I, I'm not kidding. These people have turned to, to the point where they don't care anything about themselves, about our community, and they allow, and what's happening is you guys, or I should say, somebody is allowing these folks to continue to do this behavior, and this is not a good look for the City of Grants Pass. This city needs to be cleaned up. That's why you're here. Please do your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any other blue cards up here for people that want to speak, so we will commence with public, general public comment and move on to the consent agenda. And we had a counselor that would like item 4A to be starred. Did you have specific questions or something that you would like to address, Eric?
Yes, thank you. Okay, I just wanted to point out on page 51, I had a question regarding, it's highlighted, it says, "purchasing using our State of Oregon Purchase Agreement Number 1641." Just wanted to know, is that, is that funding provided by the state, or is that just, I mean, who, is the, is the city paying for that?
Yeah, the, the city is paying for the vehicle. What happens is the state puts out annual bids, and because there is, they can guarantee a larger number of sales, they get more competitive pricing than we do by purchasing the vehicle as an individual. And so we, it's called cooperative purchasing. We participate in that cooperative purchasing to get better pricing.
Okay, that was my next question. Obviously, if we're talking RFPs here, and that, that has happened.
This would actually bypass the RFP process because the state generally, we could go out and RFP it, but generally the state gets much more competitive pricing than we would buying a single truck, because they're buying 10 or 20 trucks. And as a result, the prices are much lower than if we're just buying one.
Thank you so much. I just saw the, the
No.
Big price tag there.
It is a very big price tag. And I will say that we very much got our money's worth out of this vehicle, 27 years. We would still keep driving it if it weren't for the fact that it's getting harder and harder to keep it on the road, and we just need it up 100% of the time.
Sure. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Rick?
I was amazed at the price tag we get for dump truck these days, but I did some checking around today, and apparently this is a good price tag, so I was amazed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Perfect. Just a question back to you, Eric. Are you good to leave this on the consent agenda?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. All right, the consent agenda is shown on the screen and is, bring it back to council for any further discussion or action on consent agenda. Victoria?
I move to adopt the consent agenda as written.
All right, we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as written and shown on the screen for everybody. It looks like we have a second from Eric. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, we'll go into a roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. Thank you. All right, on our meeting agenda, we're down to matters for mayor, council, and staff. Bring it back to council. You guys have anything for discussion? Seth?
Um, yeah, I would like to potentially reconsider the labor attorney for the task force. I've been, you know, reading the emails that have come in from task force members and some community members at large. You know, we were supposed to have a task force meeting this morning at 9:00 AM, and now it's two to three weeks out. And so really, at this point, we're just delaying the process. I mean, I voiced my opinion on Monday, and I just think that, you know, why do we need to delay it more? I understand the legalities of it, but you know, I think as a task force, you know, we want to go through this, and then we want to get it reviewed at the end of the task force, you know, when we come to what we think is a good recommendation, so.
Victoria?
Just a comment on that, that I know that we wanted to do this out of an abundance of caution, but I wonder if Stephanie might be able to tell us a little bit more so the task force might, if we decide to reconsider, if the task force could go forward without this labor attorney, because they are not covered by the same laws. So we, we discussed that a little bit, so maybe you could weigh in on that just a little bit, Stephanie. Thank you.
I think if we're going to go down the path of having further discussions about why this might be appropriate, we need to schedule an executive session.
Oh, oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, so not to ignore Seth, he had, he would like to entertain a reconsideration. Is there any other counselor that feels the same? Joel, do you have a comment, or?
Um, yes, I do, and I'm not sure how it fits into the executive session, so Stephanie, you can speak up however you want. But whatever we do, what would also suffice would be a, a legal review when it comes before council.
Kathleen?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, is it possible to do that executive meeting tonight?
Not tonight.
No, we do need public notice for that. Any further discussion on this topic? Indra? And then Rob?
Not to put you on the spot, Rick, but you were absent at the workshop. How do you feel about that?
I could go either way, but if there's a way that would expedite the process, I'd be in favor of that, but I guess I would like to hear from Stephanie, legal counsel, ramifications of our consideration. Thank you.
Rob?
Yeah, I, I didn't really understand Monday, although I did support running this by or having a, the labor attorney involved, but I, what I don't understand, and maybe Stephanie can clarify, what actually is the difference between the, probably the very same labor attorney reviewing and, reviewing and making recommendations when the council considers it? How is that any different than, or in other words, how would, how would, how would having this, a labor attorney at a, at the lower level of this discussion with the task force make any difference? The same attorney is going to review it when it gets to council, and we will hear their opinion at that point. So, you know, why do we necessarily need to have the opinion while the task force is involved? As opposed to later on?
Stephanie, do you, can you add in on, or do you feel that this is still an executive session matter?
My preference would be executive session, but I think we've kind of let the cat out of the bag on everything at this point now, so I'll respond as generally as I can. The difference is that a, having someone in the room providing that legal guidance stops anything from happening before it taints the process. If it, you wait until council gets a recommendation and then they go back and look, they could go back and look and say, this process is tainted by whatever happened, and now you can't go forward with that. So what we want to potentially avoid is anything that says that the process was improper. And you can't do that by reviewing it afterwards unless you're willing to undo all the work that was done.
Thank you, Stephanie. Indra? Indra?
I would support Seth's recommendation to revisit it in an executive session.
Okay, so I do see some favoritism to discuss this further in executive session, so I would be looking for some council action to advise staff or direct staff to schedule an executive session or to, for further discussion. Kathleen?
Yeah, I would say, let's set this up as soon as we can, so that we don't have to wait three weeks.
All right, Aaron, do you have direction that we, council does wanna further entertain conversations about this in an executive session soon?
Well, if I can have some more clarity, just so, so I can make, make, for a partial thing, is it the scheduling that is the concern with having someone present? Because I did get correspondence from the attorney today that they, sounds like they're pretty flexible to meet whenever the committee needs to meet. So, if it's a scheduling issue, we could still potentially move forward. If it's that you don't want them present at the meeting, that's, that's another issue, so. And then if we want to schedule an executive session, we would need to schedule it, I guess, sometime next week, and we could maybe have an executive session, the earliest probably would be this, the 7th, which would be Monday.
Rob?
Well, based on the people that we appointed to that task force, I have full confidence that they're gonna do a really good job, and they've probably been doing a really good job. And I wouldn't want to potentially taint or risk anything that they tell council. There's nobody on that task force that I have any doubts about as far as their, we'll say, mental stability or them being any kind of rogue actor. I don't believe that would apply to anybody who's on that task force. So I, I believe that the, the best support we could give them would be to have this labor attorney in the room, because the person is going to basically be commenting on their work later anyway, so if there's a problem with the work, and I don't believe there'll be a problem with the work, but I'd like to increase the chance, or the chances, that we will be able to take their work with its full force and full effect if council so chooses without having to worry about it being reviewed later on. So, I, I really don't see a reason not to have that attorney there, because I think I just want to make it as easy as possible for that task force to move forward and provide council with their recommendation. I don't see how, even if, I, I don't see how not allowing that attorney, or basically not directing that attorney to be in the room, we're gonna deal with that attorney's look at this thing anyway. And I'd rather give the, the, the task force the full confidence that they're moving forward legally and that they can say whatever they need to say, be corrected if they need to be corrected, and they can move forward, considering those corrections in real time with that attorney, they can move forward and still give us a definitive, unambiguous recommendation. And I think they'll be stronger, I think their voice will be stronger if any potential legalities have been pointed out to them along the way. They can just be more confident when they recommend to council whatever it is they recommend.
I think you-
So I'm not in favor, so I'm not in favor of basically debating that issue again. I'm in favor of moving forward with that attorney, because I think it, it actually backs up that task force to the max, quite frankly.
Thank you, Rob. And I apologize, I did skip over Victoria. Victoria, you had comments?
Well, I think what I was going to say was, maybe scheduling the executive session would push it out even farther, but when Aaron said it could be Monday, then that doesn't seem like it will. But, so, I would be in favor of expediting the process with or without the attorney, and take the recommendation of the, of the task force. That's what I would be in favor of. So, if, if Seth wanted to weigh in on, again, on what he felt about that, then that would be great.
Kathleen?
Yeah, I also think that we voted in some good people and have full confidence in them. And the other thing that I've considered is, is the extra large sum of money that has to be paid out to an attorney for extra sessions. I mean, if we can expedite this and, and not have to pay a big attorney fee and get that executive session set up, I would be in favor of that.
So I'm gonna bring it back to Seth. With the knowledge that, that, is your concern more of having the representation there, or is it for scheduling? No, I know, I just, I'm, I'm trying to get a little bit more clarity from, from what, what your first action was, and then we'll go to Rick.
Well, Rick, Rick's the chair, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Rick. And then Joel.
I haven't taken a poll, but my gut feeling would be scheduling more than representative being there. I think with the knowledge that the attorney is not a voting person, but just listening and, and helping in the meeting.
Okay, so it is more of a scheduling issue?
Yeah, that would be my impression.
You just wanna, you wanna keep the flow of the task force, is kinda what I'm getting?
That's my gut feeling, but Seth, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I would, I would agree. I mean, I, I, I voted yes. So, yeah, it's just the scheduling. And so, if, Aaron, I, I, we haven't talked outside, so yeah, if he's available, or whoever the attorney is, that's great. Next week, I don't know, whenever we can get the task force meeting scheduled again.
Yeah, the firm, she contacted me, and of course, she said she was on vacation, and she was trying to meet the timeline of the, the, the meeting that you had scheduled, said, well, if we need to, I can have one of my associates present also. So, sounds like they've got some bandwidth to meet when required or necessary, when you have a scheduled meeting. So, technically, if you wanted to meet next week and, and have one set up, I would send correspondence to them and connect with them to confirm their availability if you wanted to set something up next week for a meeting, or if council so desires to not have them present, then further discussion would be appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that. By selfishly, next Tuesday works best for me. But, I'm out of town the rest of it, so.
Well, what I'll do is I'll, I'll reach out to the law firm, and, and we'll see if we can get something set up for Tuesday.
Joel, did you have any other comments?
I, I, just real quick, you know, you, you wanna do things right the first time, because it's even more expensive to go back and do it again. And the other thing is, I think our employees deserve to know that, that we care enough to do this. And, so, I, I would suggest, if, as long as it doesn't delay it, that we go ahead and proceed. And in the long run, it, it may save us money rather than, than cost us money.
Okay, so I'm getting the sentiment that you feel that it would be more of a scheduling issue, trying to keep the flow and the continuity of the task force. So, is, I'll, I'll have a consensus from the council if you want to proceed with having the attorney present as soon as possible for the next? Okay, it sounds like you had consensus on that, so we won't need to go into an executive session to further discuss. We'll just go forward with what our first action was, was to employ the in, lawyer to be present, and looks like the scheduling will work out for everybody. Any further items for council? Indra?
Yes, I, I would like to bring up Kesterson Park, which is right in the middle of town, and it's such a blight on our city. I know that wasn't included in the list of parks. It's a tiny, it's, it's really not a park, it's a tiny piece of land, and so I know things might change soon, but if not, I would like to see something done with that park. And I know there have been several recommendations on what we can do with that park, but I, I think, I hear a lot from constituents about Kesterson Park, and why are we allowing that, the camping there, right when you come into town? So, I would like us to think about how, if, if all the parks aren't gonna be cleared soon, how we can at least clear that park. Thank you.
All right, I'll weigh in on that. Kesterson Park is included in the injunction, and we are not, as a city, allowing anything. We are actually bound by the injunction, the temporary injunction, that we are not, we do not have the ability to enforce any no camping regulations or any bit in Kesterson Park, because it is included within the temporary injunction. Any further discussion from anybody else? Joel?
I'd just like to recognize the efforts of staff for controlling speeding in the southwest part of the city, well, across the whole city, to be honest with you, but there were some issues on Willow Lane, and the attention that staff paid to it. I just commend them for that and being responsive to citizen input.
Any other counselor? All right, I'll just weigh in real quickly. I want to commend Dale and Park Watch for putting on their kids event this last weekend. Me and my wife did show up and, and see the attendance. It was pretty amazing to see that, you know, community-driven, community event was very popular, and it was, it was a hit, seemed like it was a hit with the kids that we saw when we were there, and, and we walked around and talked to everybody that was attending, and they all had blue and pink mouths from all the snow cones. So it was, it was pretty cool to see that our parks being utilized in that, and that atmosphere, and it was just, it was awesome. So, they do a great job, and I commend Dale and Park Watch for putting that on. It was, it was a great event. Staff?
Yes, I have, just as a follow-up for our grant review committee that's coming up. There, I did send a notice out to mayor council and ask who might be interested in serving on the committee to review any grants that come up for our homeless grant program. There's two openings, and we have four interested council members, so if we can get direction tonight, so we're prepared to, to begin that review process, that would be wonderful. So if council can let me know what two of the four you'd like to have on the committee, the four that are interested and showed interest were Kathleen, Victoria, Joel, and Rob.
Okay, so with the scoring committee or the scoring personnel, we had, as, as a council, you guys had approved two council members to attend and participate, but we do have interest of four people that wants it, so basically, sounds like Rob is interested, Joel, Kathleen, and Victoria. So it's up to council for discussion to see who would best fit the, or who wants to be in the two positions. Victoria, and then Eric, and then Indra?
I would say that I would like to just propose that it be Kathleen and Joel. That it would be those two people. I think that would be a good pair, if people want to agree to that.
Eric?
I agree with that. Kathleen's got a great background when it comes to these type of things, and Joel has been involved with a lot of these type of issues as well. I think they'd be great candidates.
Indra?
I don't know if there's a restriction on us just having two, but I think if four counselors are interested, we should allow all four counselors to be involved if they'd like to. I think the more, the merrier.
So as a council body, you guys agreed to have two open spots for counselors, so you would have to amend or change that, but basically, that's, that was what you guys agreed on in the beginning. Rob?
I think we should probably vote one at a time, but I would agree with those two.
Joel?
I'm certainly willing to serve. My first preference would be Rob and Victoria, just because they, they have a diversity of opinions, and I would like both represented at the meeting, but I think Kathleen and I could do as well. Yeah, so, but that was my first opinion.
Seth?
I'm gonna nominate Kathleen and Joel right now.
Victoria?
I'm just second.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so, we had a recommendation for Rob and Victoria, and we had a recommendation for Joel and Kathleen, so we'll put it up. Rob and Victoria?
Oh, well, we had a nomination, a second, so we're just waiting on these.
Oh, you did put a nomination. I apologize, I missed that.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have a nomination for, sorry, Seth, will you repeat that? Because I obviously didn't listen. I'm opening listening now. Sorry.
Yeah, I nominate Kathleen and Joel.
Okay, and Victoria did raise her hand for a second on that, so we do have a nomination on the table right now for Victoria, oh, sorry, Kathleen and Joel. I know, sorry. Kathleen and Joel with a second, so I guess let's do a thumbs up for that. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, Kathleen and Joel will be representing, representing counselors on the scoring committee. Okay. Brad?
Today is July 2nd. Friday is July 4th. And we have one of the city's three events. So just a reminder, and we've been busy planning, just kudos to Dana and a lot of other city staff who have been very busy getting ready. Everything looks good, so unless the fire chief says we have some kind of red flag warning in the next couple of days, we are a go. So please come on out to Reinhardt Volunteer Park. Four o'clock, and the concert's at eight.
Thank you, Brad. I love that green light going forward. And I have been asked to introduce the band at this event, so I will be participating in introducing the band and trying to give kudos to everybody involved, as well as promoting the 4th of July event, so just announcing that. Yeah, everybody show up, it should be great, everybody should participate. Indra?
It's such a great event. I was there one year, years ago with my kids, and the sprinklers went off, so I want to make sure you don't have the sprinklers on Friday night.
Any further comments from staff? All right, seeing none, thank you. I would be, bring it back to council for a motion to adjourn the city council meeting and convene urban renewal agency meeting. Victoria?
I motion to adjourn and enter into the urban renewal.
We have a second from Seth. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, we have adjourned, we have adjourned the city council meeting and have convened urban renewal agency meeting. We have a board action resolution awarding Osland Holdings 735 Southeast 6th Street LLC a building rehabilitation and restoration grant up to $44,973, and I will give the floor to Dana.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm Dana Pierce, I'm of the Economic Development Division of Community Development Department. And as the mayor said, we're looking at an urban renewal agency building rehabilitation grant for Osland Holdings. This resolution would authorize the payment of a matching urban renewal agency building rehabilitation and restoration grant, an amount up to 25% of the total qualifying private project costs not to exceed $44,973 for Osland Holdings 735 Southeast 6th Street LLC. This does relate to the council goal of economic growth, encouraging economic vitality, growth, and diversification. A little bit of background, since 2021, Osland Holdings has been investing in a multi-phase redevelopment project at this location, 735 Southeast 6th Street. It's also known as the Riverway. Osland Holdings improved the site, including building a human bean coffee stand and parking lot improvements. As part of the building remodeling phase of the project, they are preparing for two new tenants, a gym and a food service establishment. Some of the building upgrades that are needing assistance include the front, storefront window and door replacement, adding a staircase, providing public safety improvements for second-story egress, installing an elevator, upgrading bathrooms for ADA accessibility. Life safety and accessibility improvements are supported by the goals of the Grants Pass Oregon, Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency, and Osland Holdings is working directly with prospective tenants and anticipates that that building will be occupied in September of this year. Here's the site location map, so you can see where it's located, between 6th and 7th Street. It's in a highly visible commercial area just south of L. And this is an image of the minor site plan. You can see where the building's located on the site, and in the bottom corner, you can see that this is Phase 3 of the project, the remodel. I'm not sure why this isn't loading. Oh, okay. Well, you can see in your packet that there's an image of the floor plan. It shows the layout of where the stairs will be located. There in the center is the lift, it's an elevator lift in that same open space. And then, well, we can't see are the, where the ADA bathrooms will be located. But those will be on both the first and second floor. Here's just an inside image. This is in the balcony area. The direction that we're looking towards the windows is where the staircase would go, and right about where we're standing is where the lift would go. So this project does meet the goals and objectives in Section 3 of the adopted URA plan, Goal 3, which is redevelopment and development, and Objective 4, which is redevelopment or removal of undeveloped, underdeveloped, or blinded properties in the URA. The project also meets the funding eligibility for Section 5 on Project 9, that's the building rehabilitation and restoration. And these particular activities qualify the rehabilitation of the face of a building, including windows and doors, public safety improvements, and ADA accessibility improvements. As far as cost implications go, the resource for this project would be the fiscal year 26 URA budget. There's $250,000 appropriated for grant opportunities. In this current grant request, the total eligible project costs are $179,890. 25% of those established costs are allowable, and so the grant request is for $44,973. The call to action is this evening, July 2nd. It's at council discretion. Your alternatives are to modify the proposal, deny the proposal, or accept the proposal. And here's a potential motion for you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any councillor have questions for Dana? In regards to this? I don't see any questions so far.
Thank you.
So I'll bring it back to council for discussion or further action. Kathleen?
I'm so encouraged that this building's finally getting up and running and used. It's been a long, long haul. So I moved to approve the resolution of the Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency awarding Ausland Holdings 735 Southeast Sixth Street LLC a building rehabilitation and restoration grant for up to $45,000, $44,973.
All right, we have a motion on the table to approve the grant with numerous seconds, so any further discussion? Okay, I'll bring it to roll call vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, passes. And we don't have anything else on that agenda, so I'd be looking for council to, for a motion to adjourn the urban renewal agency meeting and reconvene city council meeting.
I motion to adjourn the urban renewal agency, thank you.
Yeah, we don't have to go back into city council, because we don't have any other business, and we already.
I have motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. Second, Rick? We'll just do a quick roll call vote, Kathleen?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, all businesses concluded today, and thank you very much.